You look a mole. Now, it is so good to see you.
My thing won't stay on. Can you turn yours on? Oh, never mind. Mine's coming on now. It wouldn't stay on. I don't know. CSS. Ready? Here we go, guys. I'd like to call the order. The Keokuk City Council meeting October 16th, 2025 at 5:30 PM, 501 Main Street. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever since the birth of Christ.
May I have a roll call? Crunchaw?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mullen? Hackley?
Here.
Dade?
Here.
Andrews?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Greenwald?
Here.
All present. Item number four, Mayor's Correspondence. Friday, October 18th, 2025, Lake Cooper Foundation's Extreme Nightmares Haunted House is at from 6 to 10 o'clock PM. And Saturday, October 19th, 2025, Family Fright Fest in Rand Park from 4 o'clock, from noon to 4 o'clock with hayrides, pony rides, costume contests, pumpkin carving, fun treats, fun and treats for everybody. And also, Lake Cooper will have their haunted house open again from 6 to 10. Sunday, October 20th, 2025, the community concerts at the Grand will start. And the first one is a group called The Suits, and they'll be performing Rock, Doop Wop, Motown, and it starts at 4 PM at the Grand Theater. Then Friday, October 24th, 2025, Downtown Trick or Treat is from 3 o'clock to 5 PM, and it's a great event sponsored by the Main Street Incorporated. If you've never been to it, it's a fantastic thing to see. Last year, we probably had 400 families trick or treating up and down Main Street. So it's a great fun time for the kids and for families. The Keokuk Public Library will be having Thursday and Friday, October 23rd and 24th, and from 9 AM to 5 PM. And Saturday from 9 AM to 12 PM on Saturday, the 25th. And this is a book fair and a book sale, and it's a dollar a bag for books. So come and see what they have to offer. I'd like to reach out and say that we had a great forum for our mayor and council candidates. And always a reminder to please vote. Those people are working hard to get your vote. And there's a lot of new and fun ideas, and so please make sure that you vote. There are openings still on the Historic Preservation Commission, the Rand Park Pavilion Commission, City Planning, Board of Adjustment, and there's one left on tourism. Please call City Hall if you're interested. These are great ways to serve and find out how your community works and how those organizations work. And as always, eat, drink, and shop local. Kindness matters. Item number five is citizens' request. So if you're here about the library and about parking, when we get to item number seven, that's when we will talk about that. So if you're here to talk about that, we want you to come up during that time. All right? So but if there's anybody here for citizens' request that has another thing they'd like to speak about, please come to the podium, state your name and your address. Okay. Item number six, Consent Agenda. Minutes of the Regular Council Meeting of October 2nd, 2025, Cash Receipts and Treasuries Report for September 2025, Resolution Approving a Liquor License for Gate City Restaurant and Bar, 2601 Main Street, Class C Retail Alcohol License Effective October 24th, 2025, Resolution Approving a Liquor License for the Southside Boat Club, 625 Mississippi River Drive, Class F Retail Alcohol License Effective October 31st, 2025, Resolution Approving a Liquor License for Aldi Incorporated Number 15, 3379 Main Street, Class B Retail Alcohol License Effective November 7th, 2025, A Resolution Approving Urban Revitalization Tax Exemption for Steven Rogers, 1518 Franklin for a detached garage, Reappointment of Kyle Riddle to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board, Term to expire November 2nd, 2028, Appointment of Erin White to Convention and Tourism Bureau, Term to expire December 31st, 2028, And Motion to Pay Bills and Transfers Listed in the Register's Number 5501 through 5503. I need a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda.
Sound moved.
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven under Old Business. I need a motion to remove from the table the ordinance of 9.28.040.
Sound moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Continuing on with number seven. I need a motion to approve the initial reading. I have, we have a first and a second from the previous meeting for the Ordinance Amending Section 928.040 dealing with parking regulations at the library.
So to continue our discussion on this, I tabled this at the last meeting to give time for feedback from the community and also to see if there is any form of compromise or other structure that could be reached with the library. So following up on that, has there been any compromise reached in regards to that?
At our last Department Head meeting, it was the consensus of the Department Head, the mayor and the administrator to keep the ordinance on the agenda as proposed. And we just kind of decided either we do the no parking or we keep the street the way it is. I know on the library side, they would prefer to keep the street currently the way it is. So that's kind of where we're at right now, unless the council wants to amend what we have proposed.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
So I'm going to go ahead and read what the ordinance would read. It's the Public Works Department is requesting that no parking be allowed on the Southern Lee side of North Fifth Street from Concert Street to High Street across from the public library. And it was put there in last time, and it is still in there. I would therefore recommend that no parking be allowed on the Southern Lee side of North Fourth Street between Concert Street and High Street. And at that time, staff recommended approval. So again, we have a first and a second from the previous meeting. If you have a comment to make, you can come to the podium and you can state your name and your address. But we kind of don't need 25 comments of the same thing. We just need to know from a few people how they're feeling. I don't know if you have yays or nays. But if you could, if there's a couple people that want to come up and say what they're feeling, but I don't think we need to have 25. I mean, we'll see what everybody's thinking. So is there anybody that wants to start us out?
My name's Ken Martin. I live at 715 Cleveland here in Keokuk. I'm opposed to it. And the reason why I'm opposed to it is because of the people that have disabilities. I understand that there's a parking lot out back with an elevator. And that's great that you have that. But the problem being, I think, is the distance from your back parking lot to the front desk is very long. And I think if you're disabled, you're a senior citizen, it's very, very tough on you. So I'm definitely opposed.
Thank you, Kenny.
My name is Edward Malloy, and I live at 217 North Fifth. And I'm opposed, although I don't park in front of my house because I know there's a people that go to the library that needs the shorter walk. So I park them back. And I know the Sebus comes occasionally, drops people off. But the Sebus can come up to the back, let the people off there. There's no traffic there, and they can either use the steps or take the elevator up. And if they do wait with the parking on my side of the street, then my grandkids have to cross over the street. It's safer to walk across Fifth Street than it is to walk across from the parking lot on Concert over to the library because I see the way traffic flies just to get to a stop assigned on Fourth. So that's why I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you. And I did pass on your information, though, and we had a conversation to the city clerk today.
Hi, my name is Chrissy. I'm at 311 North Fifth. And I love seeing so much of the community come to the library. I see so many of those spots full today, for example, people with their canes walking across the road because it's level to get over there. I saw a mother holding the hands of her children, walking safely across the street. We have all, except for one house, multi-family units along High Street on either side of Fifth. We've already run out of parking, and there's an elderly gentleman that rents an apartment that has to park there with his handicap sticker. That's the closest spot he has. So now we'd be displacing this gentleman over a single incident. And from my understanding, I mean, the library's been there for decades. People have been able to safely navigate. If we do anything about safety, I think first we need to look at speed bumps there on Fifth, if that really is a concern, signs up saying, please watch for children, maybe reduce the speed limit. But I went today and measured the amount of space between the bus that was there and the parked cars, and you have approximately 20 feet, 20 feet of road that you can fit a bus. And if we can't fit a bus in that distance, we need to retrain our bus drivers, is my recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. So I think, okay, Monica.
Hi, Scott. Something really quick. Monica Winkler, Library Director. I gave you all of my issues last time. I will just update, say, did contact Sebus because I think we were led to believe at the last meeting that they could only drop off in front. And they said no, that it could be allowed to drop off in the back. They would have to come and kind of do a drive-through to make sure that it worked, but it would be a possibility, and they haven't been able to get to that yet. So that's an update on what the Sebus can do.
All right. Thank you, Monica. Okay, so up here, do we have any discussion up here, guys?
Well, I would just like to say that I've had several folks reach out to me via phone call to express that they are opposed to this.
Okay.
I'd like to thank everybody for giving feedback from the community on this topic. So many times we have discussions up here where we really don't get that feedback. And so I'm happy to see the amount of involvement that has really, over the last couple of weeks, popped up in the community. I think this ordinance is maybe too large of a first step by hearing that it's been a small, isolated incident, and maybe the bus could reroute. That might be a more appropriate first step. I think maybe doing an information campaign to encourage those that are able to use the parking lot across Concert Street would be a good first step. But I think going all out with this form of an ordinance is too large of a first step here. So I am not in favor of voting for this ordinance.
Any more discussion? So I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. Crunchaw?
No.
Walker? Mullen? Hackley?
No.
Dade?
Nope.
Andrews?
No.
Tillman?
No.
Bryant?
No.
Greenwald?
No.
Zero nine.
So the motion fails. Okay, so we're going to move on to, well, actually, is a gentleman here from the Optimist? Are you going to, did you want to come up and speak now? Okay.
Mayor Mahoney, GM, Councilman. Good evening. My name is Dennis McGregor. I'm a member of the Optimist Club of Burlington West Burlington, also a member of the Fort Madison Area Optimist Club. I'm also the Lieutenant Governor for Southeast Iowa, managing seven clubs in the Iowa District. My purpose is to inform you about the attempt to organize an Optimist Club in the Keokuk area and to promote this venture. An Optimist Club in comparison is likened to Lions Rotary or Kiwanis Club. We are the fourth-largest civic service organization in the world. Optimist International is home in St. Louis, Missouri. I can speak on the core values, but at this time, it was better to give you a webpage, so you may look at that for yourselves. So please search www.optimus.org if you are looking for a more full Optimist experience. For me to contact individuals in the Keokuk area to promote this effort would take months, if not a year or more. Thus, I must rely on the people of Keokuk to pass this news to others to complete the task in a shorter time. The Optimist Club of Keokuk will have the opportunity to affect the lives of area youth in whatever manner they choose. Some of the programs that are operated by clubs throughout the world are Junior World Golf, scholarship programs such as the essay contest, which there's a $2,500 scholarship on the district level. There's also a communication contest for the deaf and hard of hearing, and also a program called Kids Speak Out, which is more of an elementary age. Oratorical contests with a $2,500 scholarship at the district level, a $5,000 scholarship at a regional level, and a $15,000 scholarship on the world competition level. That's a total of $22,500 in scholarship money possible. We also offer childcare safety programs, which includes bike safety, internet safety, and childhood health and wellness programs. Fourth, we have Joy Clubs. Joy is Junior Optimist International. It's youth clubs which are created and managed by the local Optimist Club, which I could foresee one being built here in Keokuk. The Optimist Club is autonomous to Optimist International as the club that will be organized in the Keokuk area will be in charge of their own programs, destiny, and fundraising efforts. Optimist International is there only for guidance. Keokuk can create scholastic programs, as previously mentioned, or can support sporting events or support schools, excuse me, support schools, churches, or other organizations and events within Keokuk or South Lee area. The Keokuk Club would develop their own programs based on the needs of Keokuk and the surrounding area. Optimist Clubs throughout the Iowa District implement fundraising effort called Avenue of the Flags. Again, this is developed and managed by the local club. In short, the club sells subscriptions to fly the US flags in neighborhoods or commercial areas, as allowed by the city, for five to six patriotic holidays. That would be Memorial Day, Flag Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, and Veterans Day. And usually, subscription runs anywhere from $40 to $60, depending on your community. Some will also fly the flags on Patriots Day, also known as 9/11. I will, in the very near future, organize an informational meeting for more in-depth information to the citizens informing regarding the Optimist Organization and structure of Optimist International. I have made contact with City Hall, Keokuk Chamber, Keokuk Public Library, Keokuk Public Schools, Keokuk Police, and quite a few prominent residents of Keokuk. I have the support of Superintendent Dr. Kathy Dinger, and librarian Monica Winkler has also had some high interest in this particular organization. Optimists bring out the best in everyone. Please consider the Optimist Club of Keokuk as your personal tool to achieve greatness in your youth and yourself. And I want to thank you all for the things you do to serve the people of Iowa, Keokuk, Iowa. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I need to stick around for the rest? Do I need to stay here for the rest?
That's up to you. Okay, are we ready? Item number eight, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of a Copier for City Hall. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sound moved. Second.
City Hall has been reviewing copier options to replace the current unit. The existing copier is failing as copies are consistently faded and of poor quality. The existing copier is failing as copies are consistently faded and of poor quality, making it difficult to maintain essential city records and perform daily office functions efficiently. This equipment is integral to the daily operations of the office for printing, scanning, and copying essential city documents. Quotes have been obtained from Access Systems for three models that vary in speed, capacity, and price. Option one, Sharp BP 50M31, purchase price $8,670.68. Option two, Sharp BP 70C31, purchase price $9,902.69. And option three, Sharp BP 70C45, purchase price $12,288.88. This is an option to lease, there is an option to lease these machines. However, it is more beneficial to the city's finances to purchase the machine outright rather than lease, which would increase long-term debt. Timely replacement of this copier is necessary to ensure uninterrupted workflow and continued service efficiency within City Hall. After review of staff recommendations, option two, a Sharp 70C31, based on functionality, reliability, and overall value. Option one is solely a black-and-white printer that meets our copy volumes needs, but limits our functionality based on current usage for color copying. Option three is a model most closely matched to our existing printer, but is oversized, hence more expensive than needed, based on what we historically use, what our historical usage has been. Option number two is a recommended size machine to handle our usage both historical and projected as the most economical price while maintaining the flexibility of our current machine has and including color printing capability. Do we have any discussion?
I have a question. Approximately, how old is the current model?
Six years, I think.
Is our current model leased, or was it purchased?
It was purchased.
Yeah, and it's pretty much on its way out. It's pretty necessary to do it immediately.
We're not using it right now, so.
Yeah.
It's not working.
And then just to confirm that it would be a capital purchase?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I know, are you talking?
Yeah, I want to talk about the printer.
About, pardon me?
About the copier? Is there anything that, sorry. I love coming to meetings, that's all. My name's Adam Johnson, 1115 Blondo. So if you, just from a perspective of a citizen in our community, if you Google Sharp BP 70C31, if all of you just pulled that up on the internet right now, you do not find an option that costs more than $5,500. If you Google the model number listed on that itinerary, and I'm not saying we're getting bamboozled, I'm just asking if there's some sort of a, an explanation that we could give to our community and say, this is why the option on the internet is $5,000, but the option we are picking is $10,000.
Who's gonna service the one that you buy on the internet?
And that's the question.
That's basically the bigger part of it. They service that.
Over the five years?
Yeah, we have, they'll service for five years.
And it has a base copy amount built into it, so that, what's the number? It's based on the number of copies that we run through it on an average basis.
That sounds a lot more like a lease program. I don't know that there's a, this needs to be a conversation.
Essentially, you pay for that upfront. If we use, if we were to use it more than the average anticipated number of copies, that they would charge us an extra, like 5.5 cents per black-and-white sheet, and then that's like 15 cents, I think, for color sheets?
So we're talking about buying it outright?
You buy, you pay for the full five-year service, the machine plus the five-year service on the estimated usage. You can either pay it all upfront, or you can pay that on a, just a monthly basis. And it's about 15% more if you pay it.
So this is, this is like a purchase plus service agreement?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, you have a service agreement built into it.
And the service agreement should be the full price again of the printer?
It includes the printer plus their service over five years. And if they, if we end up with an issue with that printer, or if it breaks down at any point, they come in and they service it as part of that cost. If there's, if it gets to where they cannot keep it here for the five years because they cannot keep it operating, they'll replace it with another unit for that five-year period.
So what then is the benefit of not leasing the, other than having it on the, on a ledger as a, as a indebted item?
It's on a ledger as a debt item, plus you pay about 15% more over the course of the five years. So they give you a discount to pay it upfront. It's kind of like you're gonna find, you can either buy it, same as with a car, you can buy it upfront, or you can pay it off over five years.
Right.
And you're gonna pay interest on it. So it's just, it's a savings on the interest.
And in 2025, we would buy that car on Carvana and skip all the nonsense and have it delivered to your house. And I'm not trying to, I'm just saying from a perspective of citizenry here to say, we have one quote from one company for three different options, and those options are $8,000, $9,000, or $12,000. And just sitting there, I didn't come for this purpose, but I did look at this before tonight, just sitting there, I just looked up that model number, and it does come up as there are significantly cheaper options. Servicing is an issue. And I'm not saying don't do this, but as a citizen of our community, and a lot of you are on your way out, but as a citizen of our community, this is the stuff that people say, now, wait a second, why did we do that for a printer? And this is a printer, but we did it for a trash truck, we've done it for, we've done it for a lot of different pieces of equipment. And I'm not, I'm not trying to say that anybody is right, wrong, or indifferent. I haven't done all of this, and I'm not, I'm really not trying to be insulting. I'm just looking at, okay, what is the, what is the reasonable explanation for someone sitting in the back row who showed up for a totally different purpose that looks at this and says, $9,000, $9,902, but we only have one quote? And we need a printer. Everybody needs a printer. We need a copier that makes high-quality copies. I totally believe that. I don't know that it needs to be $10,000. And that's just, that's my litmus test for, is this the way that we're going to do all of the things? I've talked to a lot of council members, and one of the things that I keep bringing up is we are going to be in a community of 8,000 people, or we seem to be trending towards a community of 8,000 people. Can we continue to operate as if we need $10,000 worth of a copier? I don't know. I don't have an answer. I just want to make sure that somebody said, did you know if you Google that, it's only $5,000? Because that's sketchy.
And I think, I understand what you're saying, and you're sitting in the back of the room and you Googled it, and I understand that. But I think we also have to understand that we have looked into this, we know we need the service, the service part of it. We know that, we know that we have to buy the right copier for here, everything that needs to be done, how many copies we have. We have history of how many copies we spend, so that's, I mean, we've made in the last so many years, and how many copies that we, if we go over what we pay and everything. But I think sitting in the back of the room and you pull it up and it says, you see one on whatever, on Google, or Facebook, or Amazon, you don't know the whole story behind that.
Right. And what I'm saying is, yes, to, to all of those things, but we received one quote from one facility, according to what's presented here, for three different options. If that was the only quote that we considered for three options, then, then we only shopped at Walmart and we bought what Walmart had to sell. And it was one of those three options. But if that printer is available at, if that's the one, and that's the service price, and that's the whatever, and this is the paradigm that we use, this is just a printer, this is a small-ticket item, and nobody really cares about a printer.
I assure you, we care about the printer.
I know you care.
We don't have one right now. I assure you, we care.
I know that you care about the printer, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that.
Yeah.
I know that, this is not a prepared speech, I promise. I know that in the office level, you care about the printer because it's your daily tool, it's your daily operation thing. But from a citizen's perspective, nobody's really looking at $9,000 and saying, oh, that's what broke Keokuk. But.
So Adam, I just looked something up here on the quote from the company, and so, something that we can tell back to our citizens here is that from, from the bid that we got, they broke it down and said that on our current machine, which is no longer in use, but when it was in use, our current average maintenance cost was $194.42 per month. With this new proposal with prepaying for the five years of service, that same $194 a month would just be $92.40 a month.
Is there a reason that we pay $192 a month for servicing a copier? Is that toner and paper and all of those things, or those are auxiliary supplies? Nobody cares, I know that.
It's ink and toner also.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be crazy, just.
Includes ink and toner.
If we can communicate that, and we'll be real honest, as transparent as I can be, if we can communicate all of that, then you'll have less ticked-off people going on the internet and saying, Keokuk sucks, we're all dumb, and we spent $10,000 on a copier. I'm not saying that we're doing that. I'm saying that we have a lot, especially over the last three weeks, Facebook has been crazy, and Facebook is where Keokuk lives for some stupid reason. That is what people are doing. Even today, people running their mouths about coming down to the meeting, that's why I'm here, to say, wait a second, let's calm things down. But now that I'm here, we're looking at, we're looking at these things, and the only thing including, included in the agenda for your citizens is, we got one quote from one company for three printers, and these, this is the hose that you take.
Within the, and as you're talking about the document there, the comments on the bottom of each of them says that the price includes the recycling of the old computer, includes all toners, service calls, parts, and labor for the full five years.
Great. And I think.
It's, it's in the packet, and we do encourage people to read the packet so they have all the details.
Yep, I did.
And see what's included in that price.
We were just talking about this kind of stuff yesterday, Devin.
Yeah, and I think, I think that, you know, with you coming down and just coming up, asking the question, I like hearing it here, so that it can be answered, because when it's online, there's a lot of different answers that are not the right answers.
It's really crazy, it's really crazy right now.
And I think, so I don't think that, you know, we're putting you on your heels, I don't think you're putting us on our heels. I think that you're getting accurate information. Now whether you accept, whether we approve it or not, that's different.
Right.
You know, but.
And that comes down to the election.
Yeah.
I think, I think something else that you, that needs to be said here too, is, is
the company that we're buying from, we have purchased the last one from, and we've purchased from them before. They're very reputable and very reliable.
And, and one of the few that actually services in the area on a consistent basis. And that's part of the reason that that's, done that way too.
I think, I think it don't, wasn't the closest other service one was from, like Iowa City or something, these guys are closer. I mean, we, we know these people and we know how good they've done.
Oh, that is great. Thank you. I'm, I'm just, I know that I look like an antagonist. I'm really trying not to, I'm not trying to be. I'm just saying that we are in a pretty volatile time in Keokuk. I have no, I have no desire to sit where you're sitting. And that's not true. My wife has told me I'm not gonna sit where you're sitting, and so, so I will stand on this side and at least engage in conversation and say, hey, this is, this is what we're looking at. And, and I think there's, there's a lot to be said for the things that you've pointed out. It's hard to see that in communication at this moment, so. And again, that's a big, that's a big number jump from, from 5,000 that's available to the 9,000 that you're paying.
And I like it, because I think with you sitting on that side, and when you come in, you see the agenda and you see that you hear approves, and then it looks like, oh, wait a minute, everybody's holding a rubber stamp. But it's like, you know, as you notice, people do their due diligence.
It's a non-budgeted item, it's $10,000, it's, it's something that we're going to get stuck with, and, and everybody in Keokuk has to pay a dollar. So if everybody wants to bring their dollar, great, we can all have a printer. And that's a really easy way to fund it, but that's not the way they're gonna do it. So I, go ahead, I'm just.
I just am taking from this that you are stating that a little more explanation in the statements that were given would help the transparency lack of that we're being accused of by the general public.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Thank you.
If we can communicate, and if we can say, hey, this is, this is why, because what it says in the packet, just as you said, it said, hey, there's a, there's a service item, it includes all these things. What it says up here is, after review, staff recommends option two, and in 30 seconds, everybody said aye, and we approved, we approved $10,000. I don't want to take up any more of anybody's time. This, it's just a, this, that, that kind of a conversation was the reason that I started listening to council meetings five years ago. I listened to every council meeting, I read every packet, I'm one of a few, I think, that do that. I've read it, I looked at it, and we were talking about it yesterday, a few council members and I, out on the front lawn here, just, just because that's what it is. Thank you for your time. I hope it's a good printer, and I hope that we, I hope it lasts longer than five years, because six years is not a very long time for a $5,000 piece of equipment with a service plan.
Thank you.
I think we appreciate the questions, and it raises a question for me, which I have nothing but faith that due diligence has been done, and we're getting about the best deal we can, because we got smart people involved, and they know what they're doing, just to alleviate any concerns that we might be spending irrationally. But we're not buying this directly from the company, we're getting this through a supply company? We get it through them. We're buying it directly from Sharp? And you got, and you, we're, no, we're buying it from the Access.
Access.
Access. So it's, it's a third-party, basically, yeah. So that's gonna raise the price a little bit too, because they gotta make their money, but it's probably in our benefit to do that because we get a better deal with somebody who can guide us towards our needs and be there to. It's basically a false service option on it, and, I mean, you don't have to do something like this, but what we run into then is, we are buying all the supplies ourselves, and getting it repaired, there, you're not, you're gonna have to find somebody who's willing to repair them, and there just are not service people who are out there. They, they do a five-year lease on these for a reason. They know they, they break down, and they're done after five years. These are designed to last right out that five years. It's kind of like when you, if you do a warranty on a vehicle, the reason the warranty ends when it does is because they know they're gonna break down after that. And really, what this does point out is that we should have had this as a budgeted item previously. This should have been in, and when you have a printer like this, you should be planning on replacing it about after five years. You may get a little bit longer than that, but you're, you're really lucky if you get the six or seven years out of it. This is the type of use that it gets, and it, they are finicky.
Okay, so if there's no more discussion, we have a first and a second on the table. Already voted. Okay, so, moving right along. Item number nine. Consider resolution approving an agreement with McClure Engineering for Taxway A&amp;D Lighting Project Number 3-19-0050-028-2026. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Attached is a tax order for Taxway A&amp;D Lighting Project from McClure Engineering. The proposed agreement has been reviewed by the FAA and is ready for city council approval. Both the design fee and the future construction will be funded through a 95% FAA grant. Total engineering fee is $999,890, with the city's matching portion being $4,999. I therefore recommend approval for the mayor to sign the EOK Task Order 1 for McClure Engineering to provide the engineering services for this project. Do I have any discussion?
So to clarify, that total engineering fee is $99,890. I know you had a little. I know you had a little misspeak there, so...
Ryan, how much was this project overall going to be? Do you remember?
I believe it was somewhere in the $800,000 range. So these, just for a little back information on this, McClure was rehired by the city springtime for their five year, for five years. Were required to hire our airport engineers for five years per the FAA. At that time, they presented our capital projects for the airport with the match, which included the match monies and then this project was budgeted for at that time.
The nice thing about these projects all the way through right now are 95% federal funded. So, right now is a good time to do airport projects if you have the cash match.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, consider resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a demolition contract for a single-family dwelling located at 1012 Blondo Street. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
1012 Blondo was obtained as an abandoned property with the intent of having a developer rehabilitate it using grant funding assistance. However, after several contractors assessed the site, they all concluded that the cost of rehabilitation would outweigh the potential benefits. A qualified bid was received from WNS Contracting of Keokuk in the amount of $21,185. We felt that this was an excellent bid as we were thinking anywhere from $40,000 to $80,000 to demolish. The structure is approximately 3,300 square feet with an 805 square feet garage. We are in the process of obtaining the vacant lot, abutting the property and will put the lots up for bid in the near future. Approve the mayor to sign 1012 Blondo Street demolition contract. Do I have any more discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to say that I was kind of on defense about this one because it's kind of a shame that we basically have a demolition up for, you know, every meeting as of late. And I did go by the property. I walked around and looked inside and everything and I accept that this property is definitely too far gone. And it just got me wondering, what kind of incentive programs do we have, if any, in place that we could catch these properties before they get too far gone? Maybe incentivize people to develop them before they're, you know, past that point?
So we do try to keep an eye on vacant properties. If we see something that we believe, just like a house on Tymia Street, there was a hole in the roof. It's rehabable, so we went ahead. We did get that on an abandoned property, but we did get a roof on it. So we do try to keep an eye on them. If we think, you know, we can get them in this abandoned property and get them in the hands of a developer, we do that.
Do we have any advertised incentives like, you know, instead of paying 20 grand to tear down a building, we'll give you 10 to put a new roof on it and then maybe give a tax abatement, something like that? Something to really sweeten up the deal for developers to actually look at these properties as potential flips, you know, something...
I don't think there's a problem when you have a property that is a potential flip. You wouldn't have a problem with a contractor coming in or a homeowner, somebody that just wants, needs a house and will fix them up. You don't have a problem going ahead and having them. We just do a request for proposal, which I have three that I'm going to do here before too long. So what we'll do is send out the request for proposal, let whom, anyone, send it back. So what they'll have to do is indicate they're financially able to go ahead and rehab the property, a timeline, stuff like that. And then the council will choose who they feel is the best fit. They can also bid on a property, you know, as far as 10,000, 1,000, it just, you know, depending on what they feel like they can purchase it for and then put into it. You know, there are a lot of homes that are sitting down. I asked Casey to give me her nuisance demos as far as we have 180,000 for demolition. We do have right now, four properties that have been demolished. We have three more, one tonight, and then we already approved 624C and then we'll have 727 Exchange. It's the white, big White House. I think it's probably a multifamily down the corner. So we've spent, with those in mind, and tonight's, we will have spent 60, I'm sorry, have it written down here? Somewhere? 64,000. So we're hitting, you know, what we can. We do have some funding that we could use for, you know, if we can find something that's worth putting a roof on, that if we think that we can get it, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't think the city really wants to put a roof on something that we do not own. But I do advise people, if they are living in the houses and they need assistance, there are assistance through qualified low to moderate income through the Housing Trust Fund, which the city pays into. So I do advise a lot of people at that, give them applications to fill out. You know, I mean, there's several things that we can do, that we try to do.
And I've noticed other communities, they will actually advertise these properties, sometimes even give them away. Other incentives, you know, tax abatements, memberships to local clubs, just anything they can do to pull people in. And I was just, I don't think we do anything outside of, you know, just this area advertising to folks to catch these properties before they get too depressed.
The city cannot actually give a property away. That is, would be against Iowa code.
Well, I mean, you could sell it for a dollar, you know, something like that.
Correct, but you do have to put it out for a bid. I mean, that you either have to sell it for fair market value or you have to have it out for a bid, one or the other, per Iowa code. And as I said, a lot of times people have purchased a lot for just having a bigger yard to put a garage on, that they say, I'm going to spend $10,000 to construct a garage and I'll buy the property for $5. That's happened many times.
But that won't bring in the same amount of tax revenue that a house would.
Sure. No, it would not. Nope, it would not.
Tyler, there are some different options that are out there that could be looked at over time. One of the things that we do right now, rehab housing grants is what we've gone after. And this was one that we were, had tried to run through a rehab housing grant. It has, those federal funds end up with a lot of strings attached, which is, we found makes it pretty difficult to actually get people to want to use them. They tie it to income level, they tie it to needing to maintain ownership. So you only get a select few who are willing to do it. And Jason, you can talk a little bit from a former role too, but just thinking back to what, how Burlington ran their 657A program, which is a way that we, a city can get a hold of properties. They fairly actively would go through the community and look for properties that you could get, that were still savable, salvable, which is similar to the house you're discussing, where they could potentially take it through the court system because it's vacant, not being used, and get it back out on the open market with some caveats on it. You have to bring it up to a certain housing code. And then it is open to public bid. They actually advertised theirs for sale until they got someone who's interested and then went through the public hearing process for getting the property back on the market. They use that to help fund ongoing properties that they would get turned over and get, try to get back on the market. There are other communities that put money into, well, actually, one of the things with one of the TIFF projects that was done up in Burlington was for a new housing subdivision. Had to set aside money into low to moderate income housing where we talked about putting that money into like a furnace replacement program or siding that where you could do grant funding out of it to do that. Those are options that we can look at doing, but it takes having the money to do it. And right now, right now, our general fund is in a spot where we're hemorrhaging money out of the general fund. Until we get that corrected, we're not in a position to do that. But I think long-term that that needs to be part of how we do structure, how we budget money and set aside money to try to be smart in how we're trying to help develop and maintain our community over time. And so I encourage you with that idea. I think that's something that we should be doing as we move forward.
And this also, just in my 30-some years I've been here, it also depends on the council. I mean, I've heard many councils say, we don't want to be in, you know, the property, to own property. That's been a discussion many times. So it depends on how the council feels about being property owners. And I realize that we're trying to turn the properties over. But as Jim said, it takes, you know, funding.
Thank you.
I am derelict in not driving by this. So how big of a lawn is there on this? Have we been charged with mowing for any period of time? Maybe Casey can answer that.
We have actually, since we've owned it, of course, we've mown it, but yes, we've had to mow it for quite some time. A lot, I believe the lot is a normal-sized lot of a 50 by 140, probably 150 because the alleyway actually has been vacated. So it'd be a 50 by 150.
And what size is the lot that you're contemplating purchasing adjacent to it?
It's the same size. It'd be 40 or 50 by 150.
Is it privately owned or is it another abandoned property?
It's abandoned. It's actually vacant. It's just a vacant lot.
So you've been mowing it?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Well, anybody that's heard me very often has heard me say, the city is not a banking institution, nor is it in the real estate business. And I would not be in favor of adding to the property.
Well, this one, we already own, the 1012 Blondo. The city actually owns that. We've tried for a good year to get somebody interested.
Right, I remember.
We even offered $280,000 to $300,000 to rehab the property for a duplex or a triplex. And most of the contractors just feel like it's too big of a job, too far gone. And it doesn't look it from the exterior, but the interior, a lot of the brick, there's a lot of loose brick on a wall. I felt, I'm not a brick person, so, but I was hoping that they could...
I thought one of the exterior walls was somewhat swayed too.
One of the exterior walls is missing a layer of brick because you can see different layers of brick where they used to build the wall and some of it's gone.
That's just the fascia on that, but also on the other side, there's been so, those, I don't know what they're, trumpet vines or some type of vine that has grown up into the brick. So it's a mess.
Would, so is the goal to add the lot to it to make it more desirable to somebody to buy the whole area?
I was, I'm actually would like to see a duplex or something built on it. Have a larger lot and have a couple duplexes in that area.
For any of the rebuilding lots, if it is going to get reused, a 50-foot wide just is pretty tough for redevelopment.
Correct, in the original city of Keokuk, yep, your 50-foot wide is your required.
So I guess we really don't want to be in the property business on that, but once you, in order to get that, if it's ever going to be redeveloped and used, it's going to have to be two lots.
Pam, the only question I had was on the council action form. Under the financial box, it says, is this a budgeted item? And the box is checked yes, but there's nothing listed under the funding source or the department that the $21,185 is coming out of. So I just wanted to confirm what the funding source and the department is.
Yeah, that is coming out of your contractors.
Basically what she's saying, that line item is going to show over budget, but it's showing in the dollar amount got budgeted in a different column. We set aside about 180,000 a year for demolition projects and that's what this is getting funded out of.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11, consider resolution approving a contract for Johnson Street Millenfill. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
The city of Keokuk Public Works/Street Department solicited quotes for a three-inch Millenfill hot mix asphalt M HMA project on Johnson Street from First Street to Second Street. One quote was received from WL Miller Company. After reviewing the quote, I recommend awarding the contract to WL Miller Company in the amount of $48,248. Staff recommends approval. Do we have any more discussion?
Where did this originate?
We've been having some discussions, myself, Jim and Tom, the street department manager, on how to better utilize our budgeted roadway maintenance fund. And we've kind of decided that if we can do some infill with some millenfils on some single blocks, that would be a good use of that money. It kind of came about quickly because we're at the end of the year for asphalt. So we discussed this last Wednesday and decided to go ahead and see if we could get any companies interested in doing a paving project at this time of year. And so I sent that out to Miller, out of, Miller Asphalt, out of Fort Madison and to WL Miller. Obviously WL Miller was the only one that submitted back. So in the future, we're going to try to use the roadway maintenance funding to try to do some of these small, really small projects and not have to tap into our bonded 5 million for the bigger projects.
I understand that, but the location, choice of Johnson Street, First to Second versus some of the other single block areas that could be done?
We do have a lot of them. I would say very, a whole bunch of them, but we decided between myself and Tom that he was really in favor of doing that because of the snow piles in the winter trying to get up and down that hill. And we do have a concrete intersection to tie into at First Street. The kind of the street we're looking at next in discussions would be across the street here at South Fifth would be another one we're looking at. I don't know that we'll be able to do that this fall because of timing, but, and then there's, like I said, there is quite a few more that we're going to look at doing.
Did you do the core samples?
Yes, we did. That was what we determined with, after the core sample is that we would be able to do a Millenfill on this project.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12, consider resolution authorizing internal loan from general fund to tax increment revenue fund. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
The most recent TIF Urban Renewal Plan Amendment authorized the use of TIF funds to cover administrative costs such as attorney fees and staff costs incurred in the general fund to be reimbursed by TIF fund revenue in the following year. Authorization allowed was twenty five thousand dollars annually for up to five years. Approve the resolution to establish the base, basis for twenty five thousand dollar transfer from TIF to general fund in the fiscal year two thousand twenty seven budget to cover administrative costs. Do I have any discussion?
I did want to say in regards to this, uh, the way the state makes you do TIF, using TIF funds can be a little cumbersome. Tax increment financing funds, basically when you have an area that you're going to use tax increment financing, you have a base value for that area and your, your theory is, is that you're going to do projects in the area. And over time, theoretically, the value there should, should grow because you've done projects. I would say that there hasn't been a tremendous amount of growth in, in any property value in, in Kielkuk, but there, there is a, that, there has been an increment within the district that is part of the tax increment area. Using any funds out of there can only be used to repay debts. So we've, over time, we use it on projects. We, a lot of what we've used it on has been either a, a tax rebate on a project where we've said that we're willing to give them their tax money back for doing redevelopment. Or it's been used to pay off specifically the sewer project debt, the debt payments on those. Over the last few years, we've also used it to cover a, a lot of our economic development payments to like Lee County Economic Development, Kielkuk Economic Development, et cetera. To you, to take the money out to use on any of those projects, we, we kind of have to establish a debt that's occurring prior to that. So this will allow us the next fiscal year to transfer the twenty five thousand dollars over. And I hope I didn't just say all that for nothing, but for those who don't understand TIF, I, I know that I didn't describe it super well, but it is really cumbersome and difficult to use. And I'm sorry you have to do this.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item number thirteen, um, we have a presentation to the city council from Great River Health Systems on the status of their services. Please come forward and please state your name.
Hello again, Mayor Kathy. How are you? Hi, Mike McCoy. I appreciate your time on your agenda for the meeting. My name is Michael McCoy. I'm the CEO of Graver Health System. I've been in my capacity now for about three years. And prior to that, I was the chief medical officer for the health system for about eight or eight years before that. I'd like to just give you a few updates about the health system. I would appreciate any ability to answer some comments or questions that you might have afterwards if time allows. I, I really just wanted to cover three things briefly. I wanted to just give you a general update of the, of the health system. And just to make sure everybody understands what is Graver Health System now and what it isn't. A little bit about one big beautiful bill or O B three. For some of us, it's not so beautiful. I call it H R one. H R one is the name of the bill and it's really a tax bill. And I'll share with you some of the concerns about how it may affect rural health care. And then just to give you, finding an update on what we're doing that I think is really exciting for the region and for all of us as patients in, uh, in southeast Iowa as far as our transformation to a new electronic health record called Epic. Graver Health System, as it stands today, we really have three hospitals, campuses. We have several clinics across southeast Iowa. We now have Southeast Iowa Regional Medical Center in two thousand and twenty-one that was formed between the campuses at West Burlington and Fort Madison. That was really done to obtain a CMS designation as a sole community hospital to try to help us maximize the reimbursements we can get based on the payer mix we have. And then in July of twenty-one, we acquired through a referendum the Soldiers and Sailors Hospital in Mount Pleasant, and that's Henry County Health Center. And then in October of twenty-three, we now have the entire system on one health record and, uh, which is Cerner currently. And then one, uh, human resources and supply chain platform, which is Workday. So we, we now have that in place. We have five rural health clinics. One in Kielkuk, which is our largest. We had over twenty-five thousand visits to the clinic here last year. And that is trending upward since we got to services of, uh, somebody local that was, we'd worked on a long time, Dr. Tweedy. Um, and he's been busy and getting very busy, and we are continuing to try to expand our services at Kielkuk as much as we can. We also have rural health clinics in Mount Pleasant, New London, Waplo and Winfield. And we also had to have clinics, of course, in West Burlington and Fort Madison. We've really tried to be, be, kind of develop a service line structure within the health system. And one of the things we're really doing is, is trying to put a major emphasis on the, the safety of the care we're given, the quality of the care we're giving. We've invested in real time, accurate quality and cost accounting, data acquisition, and we partner with the country's largest healthcare performance improvement company to help improve the quality, reduce our costs and enhance the patient outcomes. We have encouraged our employees and set an expectation for approximately a hundred and seventy leaders to get involved in our communities. Our employee engagement scores have improved markedly over the last two years as, as our employee retention has improved. Each of our hospital campuses are doing well. And we're really, really working at trying to help keep everyone as close to home as we can and keep them in southeast Iowa as much as we can. I would like to, uh, just kind of give you a little bit of a statement around what I call H R one. Just a little bit too. I'd be glad for some questions a little bit later, but I, I wanted from the history standpoint of Graver Health System to, to go back through and Graver Health System first came to Kielkuk in two thousand and twelve. And they came to Kielkuk in two thousand and twelve because we were invited by the clinic of Dr. Davis, Hakes and Waddell. At that time, they were thinking about, I think, what are they going to do with careers after medicine? Thinking about maintaining their clinic, um, thinking about potentially trying to help with what could be done in a transition as they retired. So they invited us and asked us to buy that clinic. That's what brought Graver Health Systems to Kielkuk. In two thousand and eighteen, we had the open house of the new building and a walk-in clinic. And then I said, just this year, we've got Dr. Tweedy to come. We do have plans to bring in a midwife and expand and start doing prenatal care, care here in Kielkuk. We're hoping to start that right after the first of the year. And that's getting harder and harder. There's fewer and fewer labor and delivery areas in the region, but we're going to try to expand the prenatal care so we can do it as close as we can. Uh, so I just wanted to, to, to let you know that. Another, just a update as far as I, I can around Kielkuk. And I think I've been in touch with Insight. I get a lot of questions around that. Do I know anything of what's happening in Kielkuk? Do I know anything of what's happening with the hospital? So in preparation for this, two or three weeks ago, um, I had contacted Dwayne Walling, the Vice President of Government Relations for Insight. And at that time, and I, they said that I could share this, I do think they're planning to come and speak with you in, I think, in the near future. Their plan at that time, because I was trying to find out what kind of plans we can make based on what their intentions still are. At that time, they told me they're still planning on trying to become a five oh one C three for nonprofit entity and, and do still develop that into a rural, R E H or a rural emergency hospital. And so I, I know that is still the intention the last time I talked to them. And hopefully you'll get a little bit more, um, insight from them if they really are on your agenda in the near future, which I understood they were. I would like to just give you a brief statement too about H R one. The legislation represents a significant shift in how rural health care is supported at the national level. We are concerned about the projected reduction in federal Medicaid spending, funding resulting in the enactment of this bill. But we are thankful for the ongoing and productive conversations we're having with our elected officials. Medicaid is a critical lifeline to many of our patients and a foundational piece of our ability to deliver care in a rural setting. Graver Health in our seven county primary and secondary market has over thirty-six thousand Medicaid members. Over fifteen thousand of those are children. Any decrease, any decrease in funding puts additional pressure on our already thin or negative margins and could impact services over time. Fortunately, these changes are not due to take effect until two thousand and twenty-eight. We appreciate the work that our congressional delegation did to secure this delay and implementation of the changes as well as a fifty billion dollars in Rural Health Transformation Program funds. This delayed implementation will provide more time to better understand how the transformation program funds will help mitigate the upcoming changes to the direct payment program. We're actively participating with conversations with state and federal partners to better understand the full impact. What is clear is that the implementation will be complex and it will require careful monitoring in the months and years ahead. As we learn more about the full impact of these changes, we will continue working with our elected officials. This may include discussing potential changes to be passed this year once we know more. Our mission remains unchanged to provide high quality accessible care for our patients and our communities. It is our obligation both morally and contractually to care for individuals without insurance or the ability to pay. We are committed to advocating for sustainable solutions to protect access to care, especially those most in need. We're committed to navigating these changes thoughtfully and responsibly. And lastly, I'd just like to state that one of the largest projects that our health system has ever done is converting our electronic health record from Cerner or Oracle to Epic. This is a major investment in our I T infrastructure. We started pre-implementation work in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four. We had a kickoff to this work that started July eighth of this year, and we will go live with Epic on June sixth of two thousand and twenty-six. This will provide patients with more control over scheduling, billing, their medical record access, communication with care teams via access to MyChart. Any of you that have care at the University of Iowa and you have a MyChart, uh, you will soon, uh, we will, we will have the same Epic record that they have there. It'll be the same record that will be, they're going live with it down in Blessing in March of twenty-six. Uh, we're going live with it in June of twenty-six. And Genesis Health System, which is now Mercy One Eastern Division, will go live with it in September of twenty-six. So basically this whole region will have one electronic health record and you'll have a MyChart that you can take with you wherever you are getting care at any of those places. It's going to be really, really great for patient experience. This will, uh, it'll just enable us to help offer a better patient and end user experience and allow better communication, better patient care, and it'll support us better regarding our financial success. We will be able to offer better care through streamlined operations, a technology platform that will allow A I to work with our clinical and clinical support staff to help them be more efficient, help automate what we can so our staff and providers have more time where it is needed. And I would be glad to try to address any questions if time allows, um, to the best of my ability.
First off, I want to say thank you for coming and presenting to us tonight. Uh, you guys do have a wonderful clinic here in town. And just to clarify, that's the one over by Hy-Vee, the nice big white.
Yeah, right by Johnny John, Jimmy John's.
Yep, right behind Jimmy John's there, yeah.
And one of the things you might hear about is we're working with the owner of Jimmy John's to try to see if we can find a way to get a sign a little closer to the road. So you might have some proposal with some renderings coming to you in the near future about that because that's something that we really need. We're working with him on that.
Certainly, certainly. So my question for you is, um, one of the biggest needs in Kielkuk is emergency care and E R facilities. And so I know, um, we've been asking around to see what possibilities are. And I imagine the biggest hurdle is staffing, but you know, from your perspective, what's it going to take to get an emergency room in Kielkuk?
Yeah, so I would, uh, I've had these discussions many times also for now, well, it's been three years in October. Right, right now, Insight owns the license to those beds. And so, um, if they come through, and I wish, I, I would love to see it for the citizen of Kielkuk and the community, community, if they could, if they could do what they're wanting to do is do a rural emergency hospital in that space, that's really what's needed. If they don't, and right now, we, we can't make any plans. And we wouldn't, wouldn't be able to make any plans around that because there's, there's, there's licensed beds that, uh, they own the license to those. So if, if, once that's known, um, and that's why I called them and asked them before this meeting, because we, we, we can't make any plans other than expanding what we can do currently at our facility. I would like to be able to do more imaging. I want to get more providers there. I'd like to get specialists to come down so there's access to specialty services. Um, and we can do the things we can to expand everything we can at that, at that current site. But to actually try to build out emergency services there, we could not consider doing that until we know what the plan is around the license that Insight has.
And what about a step down from that, like twenty-four seven urgent care? Because I mean, you've got a large facility. So once again, is it just staffing or is it desire to have a twenty-four seven facility?
Staffing a twenty-four seven facility with the volume that we would see would be almost impossible for us to do. And I, and I realize it would be really nice to have a twenty-four seven. The twenty-four seven you need is really around emergency services, honestly, because there are so many things you can't do in an urgent care or walk-in clinic that they're going to automatically get sent to the nearest emergency department. So you, 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 what you real, I mean, I'm not trying to tell you what you want, but what you really want is twenty-four seven emergency services. And I know sometimes it'd be nice just to have somebody look in your kid's ear and, and most of those times, it seems like forever, but wait until the next morning can be done. I think there would be frustration over the things that you wouldn't be able to get done in a twenty-four seven facility because you're expecting more emergency services than walk-in clinic. But staffing it would be really, really difficult for the volumes. We, we have good volumes. We can staff it well during the day. Like I said, we had right at twenty-five thousand visits last year. But to staff it for the volumes that we've, we projected that we would get from this population in a twenty-four seven facility would be almost really, really difficult to staff it.
Thank you.
Similar with what he's just talking about, I pushed or asked Jason a little bit about this earlier, so I kind of assumed that led to a little bit of your discussion. What is, if something were to happen where Insight was not moving forward with what they're doing, what would the dynamics look of any potential talk about having the emergency services here?
I, I think what would, what would be required is to, I don't think we can even start planning and getting, um, some projections on it unless we had, um, the license given to us with no obligation to the building. That would be the requirement we would have to have even just to start looking at it.
Well, and it's kind of good to know, and I, I just wanted, I think that depending on where discussions go, we have other meetings that are going on over the next couple of months on, on this comparable topic. And I'd like to, it's good to know that there are some options that we can at least talk about, dependent on how that discussion goes.
You know, we, I mean, we've been here, like I said, since two thousand and twelve and really since two thousand and eighteen when we, we opened, uh, the new, the new building. And we're here, uh, we're not going anywhere. We want to try to help with the healthcare we can in Kielkuk as best we can. We've never been involved in the hospital or emergency care. We've tried to do everything we can short of that. And, and it's just hard for us to, to really have projections on anything as it stands right now unless we would see some changes that I just mentioned.
Any more questions, everybody? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Item number fourteen, council liaisons on reports. Anybody? Item number fifteen, staff reports.
I have a couple of quick reports. I don't know if you're aware, but we were nominated for an award for South Eighteenth Street Road of Honor. I did receive an email today, and I'll just read you a section of that. We are pleased to inform you that the South Eighteenth Street We are pleased to inform you that the South 18th Street Reconstruction Road of Honor Project in Keokuk has been selected as the recipient of the Streets and Intersection Category Award for the 2025 Excellent in Concrete Awards presented by the Iowa Reddick Mix Concrete Association and the American Concrete Institute, the Iowa Chapter. So I think that is great news that we were nominated and did receive an award with all the other projects within the state of Iowa that were presented to them. We will be given that award on November 6th at luncheon up in Ames. Another report, paving will resume tomorrow on Grand Avenue for Phase 2 for the majority of that section. And also, requests for qualifications for engineers have been sent out for South 10th Street and for Bel Air.
Anybody else, staff reports, Jim? Okay.
I guess I probably, one of the things that we have been working with, Stanley Consultants. So we've started using Stanley Consultants for our pretreatment program, trying to get, move forward with that. Tom, I don't know if you have any comments or...
Things are progressing well, and Stanley, the engineer that's going to be working with us, he's a good engineer. So, yeah, we're looking forward to working with him.
So that was work that was previously being done by Ed Askew, and so they're trying to get up to speed with where our compliance program is. We have a couple of industries right now that are out of compliance with what's being required of them, and we got to get some responses to that. Well, one is, we're waiting for a response from one of them, and we got to get a response to another on where they stand fairly quickly for making sure that we stay in compliance with our requirements. But, but we are using, again, I did want to just make sure everyone understood that we're using a different provider for that than what we were before. Part of that has had an impact on our CSO work. One of the things with our combined sewer overflow and the mandates that we have on there, DNR, EPA are working with us to do a three-year first flush study, trying to determine what our, how much flow there is during rain events, how much doesn't go through the plant, gets, goes directly to the river without being treated and seeing what the content of that is. Ed Askew was doing that, so now we're trying to get Stanley Consultants up to speed on that. We're going to have to have them get more documents from us and then probably have some discussions with VNK, who's done our background work over the last several years with CSO, the Combined Sewer Separation Projects. That's all, that part is really in flux as to where we're going. We don't know exactly who's going to be doing what, but those two firms will be moving us forward with that portion of the work that Ed Askew is doing. I think that's it for what I had done.
Thank you. Item number 16, new business. We don't have anything on the agenda, right? Nobody's put anything on?
I'm going to make a statement.
I don't know if you can, because it's not on the agenda.
It's new business. Kind of old business. I see they did actually show up finally. So for a couple, three years now, it's been slander that affects all of us as well, because if what I'm being accused of is actually happening, that means everybody here is seeing it happen and okay with that. Because if you all knew exactly how our budget worked, every penny is audited, every penny is accounted for. I couldn't steal two cents without Celeste knowing it. So if you've got something to say, now's your chance to say that. I just wanted on record that you can say what you want on Facebook, you can say what you want on social media, but you know none of it's true, and you're just all mad, and that's fine, you can be mad. But at this point, you're also putting a black mark on the city of Keokuk because you're accusing everybody up here of being okay with that, and I'm not okay with that. You want to be mad at me, be mad at me. But this is our city. This is our town, and all you're doing is running it down.
As far as the city being in charge of KAVAC, according to what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing and what we've been talking about, is KAVAC is a separate entity from the city. It has been looked at, I mean, it has been shared, talking and that type of stuff through the fire department, with the fire department chiefs once in a while, and they have, you know, they can, the person that's the head of KAVAC can come and speak with the fire department, but the KAVAC is not really run by the fire department nor under the fire department. Am I right, there, Gabe?
That is correct. We never did get an answer, because we looked at this. I sent you an email today on that. It was discussed with city attorney at the time. The main thing that we do for them is provide the blanket of workers' comp, insurance, things like that, and we actually fund them.
They do have a small budget in our...
Yes, yes.
A small budget.
But that budget does run through the city of Keokuk with the requisitions, just like any other department.
Yeah, anything that comes through the city, well, this is kind of a little difficult topic. This is not an agenda item. So you guys can't be having a discussion up here about a non-agenda item, but I know that you've got people who are here, and you've brought up the topic, so just for the mayor, do your best to try to get it through without getting the council involved in the discussion.
Okay, so we have, we have spoke, we have reached out to our city attorneys and our, and they have told us that in this situation, Mr. Tillman would have to hire his own lawyer, and he, we have told him that. And as far as how he feels about it and what he's telling you, we have to listen to what he says because he is part of our council, but this is not a council project, this is not a council thing, this is not an agenda on the item, this is something that he chose to bring up, and then I guess you guys are going to say something, but you need to give me your name and your address and that type of thing, and we're not going to, we don't need to have 10 people talk, let's just say whatever it is you need to say, and we'll go from there, because this is an agenda item, and we won't be making any decisions tonight on anything. The council will make no decision.
I understand that you're not going to make any decisions tonight, but I want to let you know, my name is Katie Hamilton. I am Kevin Baker's ex-wife. I was on the emergency corps with him for 25 years as Assistant Chief. It has brought to my attention several times regarding Mr. Tillman and his corrupt ways and the things that have been going on. Mr. Tillman, can I ask you a question?
I don't know if he can, I don't think you can do that.
I can't ask questions?
No, I think you need to just state, state what you need to state.
Okay, well, I'll state what I need to say, then. When Kevin and I had ran the emergency corps, we had a board, and the board consists of Assistant Chief, Chief Assistant Chief, Treasurer, and Safety Officer, and if anybody wanted to apply, background checks needed to be done, then it was voted on within the community. When Dan Tillman took over, all of that was gone away, including not telling the people of the group when funds were being used and things like that. And I have witnesses here, and I can get more, you know, some of them could not show Like I said, I'm not on there, I'm just here on behalf of them. So your ex-wife, or no, your wife takes care of the money, is what I've been told. And you called us out on Facebook. As you, as a councilman, you're supposed to be professional, and that was not the case. You called one of your people here ignorant, and I have the screenshots of that. And that is not professional at all. As far as training goes, none of your people know anything about boats. Your boats are not being maintenance, they went out on the river. You, a personal, let's see, one of your, one of your members had to go rescue one of your boats because it wasn't up to code, in a personal boat. And as far as I know, and doing my background checks, you know nothing about water rescue. You had to go buy your own boat in order to know how to run a boat.
Okay, so...
So the point being here is, is that...
If, can I stop you for a minute?
Sure.
If you have, if you have something to say, that, I mean, you're making accusations, and I don't know that, and I don't know that you have the proof. I think what you need to do is, if you have the proof, say it. If you don't, and the proof isn't other people sitting here, the proof is like, if you know that he did something with the money, then you should have the money, a list of things, and you should take that to a lawyer. Because you're making accusations.
So where is the money going? If they're, where's the money going? If you're not telling your people where your money's going, where's the money going?
Okay, stop, 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 she has the floor.
Where's the money going? You're not telling your people where the money's going.
We've already talked about this, and you don't get to ask him questions. You're supposed to be making comments, not accusations.
Okay, then I will sit down, and I will get with Gabe Rose on this.
That's fine, thank you very much.
All right.
Do we have any more questions?
I just want to clarify one thing that Ms. Baker said. The, sorry. She mentioned he doesn't do background checks. I know I've done several for those guys. I don't know that, I can't say I've done one for every person that's on the KAVAC, but he has asked me to do several background checks for people.
Okay, so...
One more question. What happened to the personal checking account? Do you want us to? Sure, sure.
Okay, so with that all being said, I think that that's over with. Again, I advise both parties to hire their own legal. Making accusations on Facebook, making accusations here, doesn't cut it. You need to get your lawyers involved and make your accusations that way, do it the right way, because it's not, it's not great for us to call names and do all that kind of stuff. We need to do whatever we can to make sure that everything's being run smooth, and the best way it looks like with this group is to, each one of you, find your own lawyer. Any more discussion, anybody?
One thing, just to follow up for Chief Gabe, you mentioned, we do need to clarify what the, what the authorizing documents are with KVEC or KAVAC, and try to, I think that we do need to have some cleanup that goes on, and that's something that it's, during this process, has been, has been, it's clarified. We need to have something that shows who's, who's got what responsibilities and how the two parties should be interrelating between the city and KAVAC, because there are some lines blurred about how we handle their funds. I mean, we don't bring in any funds for KAVAC. We just spend city money in reimburse receipts, but there isn't a formal arrangement where I see any documentation to back up why we do what we do, and that's something that we do need to get clarified over the next few months.
I agree, and I know Jim Dennis was involved in this conversation. How long have you been chief?
I've been chief four years, five years now, I don't remember.
So it's been about five years ago. I don't know if Jim remembers the conversations or what he found out, because we never did hear anything.
Yeah, we don't have a good set of things going on, and so it's part of, like today, for the council to understand, this is something that I sent what we do have for documents for the organizational structure to both sets of attorneys that the city uses, both James Dennis and then...
Holly.
Holly up at...
Lynch Dallas.
Lynch Dallas. And we do need to get, whatever goes on, we need to get something formalized in writing for how things are supposed to be handled. That's beyond anything that's going on between he said, she said, or anything else. We need to make sure we're protecting how the two entities interrelate.
I agree.
Christopher, you're not on the, you're not on the agenda.
Well, I thought you asked for comments.
No, I didn't ask for comments.
I just do a follow-up from June 1st and June 15th.
You're not on the agenda, sir.
This is a city council meeting?
Yes, it is, and you, if you wanted to speak, you needed to come during citizen's request. This is not citizen's request.
Is that today?
Yes, it was. Earlier.
I got here late.
I know. Thank you. With that being said, I have number 17. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Is that the beginning? What were you wanting to talk about? I mean, the meeting's done, but what were you wanting to talk about? What, what were you wanting to talk about? At the beginning, usually there is.
We can't lock our, we can't lock ourselves in, because that way, there's going to be a fire, we can't get out.
We do have some...
We can't.
We're just not allowed to.